I'm Ron Huetrelle and I'm glad to be a part of this. Steve Sanson asked me to be the moderator of this interview. I want to emphasize that it's not considered a debate. Certainly, it's more of an interview process. I'd like to do it publicly. Veterans in Politics, to their credit, likes to do these interviews publicly so that people can see them. It's also going to be on the Internet, on the Veterans in Politics website, so that people can watch it and see it. Steve, how quick is that going to be up to, would you say?
A few days.
Couple of days. We're going to have this up on the Internet, so you'll be able to see it and take a look at the answers. Dealing mainly with a lot of veterans issues, but that could expand into a lot of things when it comes to ethics. I know is one of the things they look seriously at on their charter with Veterans in Politics. We're going to go one hour because the two candidates are busy, got a lot of things going on today, certainly. And I'm going to keep it for one hour. At 10 o'clock, boom, we're done. And we'll introduce the panel here first. Travis Barrick, an attorney, former Attorney General candidate. Right there, Travis, good to see you. Karen Stielman of Veterans in Politics. Jason Brooks, Staff Sergeant, United States Marine Corps, retired. He's a benefits coordinator for Veterans in Politics. And Bruno Moya, UOC Staff Sergeant also, and he is the Assistant Benefits Coordinator. Hoorah! So, as we jump in with this, the two candidates, and certainly it's a unique situation here with the special election. If you get into that sort of stuff during the interview process, you get into that, but a unique situation. Early voting starts the 26th. Runs for two days, 26th, 27th, here in Ward 6 in northwest Vegas.
Northwest Las Vegas.
Northwest Las Vegas. And also, voting day, Election Day, is into this month, 31st. That day. So, the two candidates here, on the far side, over there on my far side, Byron Goins, 18 years in city government, City Planning, also the zoning commission, was there for eight years, longtime resident since 1963 of Las Vegas. His family has been here. The current Councilman, Steve Ross. And as I said, the unique situation with the special election is where we find ourselves now. So, gentlemen, you have thoughts you want to say right here at the very start before we jump into this?
Certainly.
Would you want to, if you'd like to?
I'd love to. Thank you. Councilman Ross? I think, and I'll make this clear, it's my opening statement today, if you will. This is nothing more than a personal vendetta driven by one used car salesman with deep pockets to waste taxpayer money. The special election is going to cost taxpayers probably about $50,000 plus or minus, unbudgeted money right now. My reelection is coming up in 2013, and it's an absolute personal vendetta, and that's all that this special election comes down to. Okay?
Good morning, everyone. How are you today? I just like to thank the Veterans in Politics for inviting me down. Just a quick story. My dad is 82 years old, still living, and a loving father, and he is a veteran. So, I'd like to thank you for inviting me here this morning. It is truly my pleasure to be in front of you.
Okay. Thank you. Veterans in Politics, Travis Barrick, go ahead. We'll start out with you and start your question for the candidates of the special election.
Can I ask a few questions and pass the business and then come back around?
Absolutely. As the attorney, as the, yes. As a ranking attorney in the room, you're free to do that. Speak up, by the way, too. We don't have microphones. I'm sort of loud and boisterous and yelling, but I would invite you also to speak up and say...
So, I'm not yelling at anybody, but let's start with Mr. Goins. A couple of setup questions. Do you know how much the county spends on drug and alcohol rehabilitation for criminal defendants?
I do not know what the county spends.
And do you know how much, how many veterans go through the Las Vegas municipal courts?
No, I don't, but I know that US vets on a daily basis on Las Vegas Boulevard and Finance Service, 162 veterans each and every day.
And would you have any idea how much money the county could save if veterans were identified when they come into the criminal justice system?
I would say through my work at Workforce Connections, we work with a lot of reentry programs, both youth and adults. We would be saving millions of dollars through the county if we would take these funds and if they would, we would save millions of dollars in the county if these types of programs are utilized for veterans. We take this funding and take it away from incarcerating and doing away with veterans as though they have no more purpose after they come back from war. We could take these funds, train veterans, put them in job training programs, help their families, help them through their health care, help them through mental issues, so that they can function and be viable citizens in the community.
Do you know Peter Quigley?
I do not.
Mr. Ross, same set of questions, kind of in a reverse order. Do you know Peter Quigley?
I do not.
And do you have any idea how much the county would save if the drug and alcohol rehabilitation program, the burden for that was shifted to the VA instead of paid for by the county?
I do not, but I would concur with what I pointed towards to the, any money shipped to go, any program should go to the VA instead of the county, the self-help taxpayer service, so it would be a tremendous thing.
So, do you support the idea of identifying veterans when they come into the criminal justice system?
Absolutely. Not only do I support that, but I know that Veterans in Politics has been an advocate for creating a veterans court, so just specifically for veterans only, and I strongly support that.
So, would you get on the phone and yank on the judges for us if they have a pattern and practice of not identifying veterans when they come into the criminal justice system? Would you make that call?
I would be more than that. I would make that personal decision.
Okay.
Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you for joining us this morning, and thank you for allowing us to present you to the public in a very open manner. Pardon? Oh, sorry. My name is Karen Stoneman. I'm a civilian auxiliary director for Veterans in Politics, and as a civilian auxiliary director, mine concerns go beyond civilian, other than veterans portion of Veterans in Politics. There's a crisis in this country, and it has a lot to do with our elected officials completely disregarding our Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Nevada. Our elected officials and our government's first responsibility is to serve and protect the people. And as I've gotten more and more into politics, I've realized that, especially now with the last few years and the grassroots movement coming up and becoming more involved with politics, people aren't really concerned anymore with listening to what candidates say they're going to do, because all candidates make promises, and we all know very well that those promises are more often than not broken. So, we're here to tell you what we want. We want a candidate who will actually listen to constituents, who will actually follow up on their promises, who will appear to the Constitution, who will stick to their campaign promises, and fulfill the duties of their position. With all that in mind, Mr. Ross, you made a statement after the recall was submitted to the Governor's Office, the Secretary of State's Office, that it was a personal vendetta and that the signatures would not be raised, that the required signatures wouldn't be raised in the request for the recall ballot. How do you explain to your constituents who are in your district to raise the petition and the votes and the signatures for your recall? How do you explain to them that you refuse to step down?
I refuse to step down?
I resign, sorry.
Well, it's difficult when you have a group of individuals who are not Ward 6 residents who are being paid by the used car salesman with deep pockets to go out there and mislead and lie to my constituency. I checked both of the signatures, both petitions, trying to recognize signatures on both of those petitions. I only recognized one signature on them, or two signatures on the first recall petition and three on the second recall petition. These aren't the people that know me, these aren't the people that subscribe to my newsletter on a bi-monthly basis, these aren't the people that see me at the Act of Adults Center. These people were lied to. In fact, during both processes, both recall attempts, I had several phone calls and several emails stating that I only signed the petition to get these people off my doorstep. So, these people were misled, these people were total lies at the door to get them to sign the petition.
That's some pretty heavy accusations if you have any proof of that it was factually lied.
Oh, absolutely. A wonderful family lives next, the neighbor that's next to mine, called my wife and said that these people came to my door and said, "Would you sign this to support Councilor Ross?" And these are wonderful people I've known for many years. When they read the petition that said, "Toss Ross," they threw them off their doorstep. So, that's an absolute lie at the door because they were having a hard time getting people to sign the petition.
That's very interesting. I'll pass to them. Actually, no, I'm sorry, I take that back. Mr. Goins, I have some questions for you as well. I was trying to find information about your history, and I had a very difficult time finding your history. And in fact, from what I understand, the Las Vegas Sun submitted to you a questionnaire of certain questions you refuse to give. I don't know if it was when you refused to give answers or you decided to provide answers in regards to your educational background or qualifications for this seat. Do you answer to that?
Yes, I can. I don't know where you got that information from.
The Las Vegas Sun?
It's inaccurate. I got a call from a gentleman from the Las Vegas Sun, his name's Mr. Daniel Tokpaki who had called me and said he was a reporter. He worked in the court system, so it's difficult for him to call me back. I gave him my email address, he sent me an email, I sent him my resume, attachment and bio, and I haven't heard from him since. But, and the reason you probably can't find a lot of information on me, usually if you're a good citizen, especially at an appointed position, you're doing exactly what you are supposed to do, you're not in the media, and there's not a lot of information out on there about you. And I believe exactly what you said at the opening, is elected officials have to be held accountable. And having a clean record shows that I have the accountability. 18 years as an appointed official shows I have the stability. The ability to raise 1,700 signatures in 10 days, valid signatures from valid Ward 6 residents that say they want to change speaks volumes of what my credentials are.
And those are your qualifications and come on?
Those are my qualifications. I have numerous qualifications of why I think I should be in this office. Number one, because I've lived in this area for 27 years. I've raised a family. I have a daughter that's in college now. I have a son that's nine years old. I'm very involved in this community. This morning, for the first time in about seven years, I missed my, pardon me for getting emotional, my nine-year-old son's basketball game this week. And I felt that it was very important, and I come and speak to the residents of Ward 6, and I come speak to the veterans, to speak to you from the heart. On the 28th of this month, my daughter, who is in college on a track scholarship, where I carried her from the age of three until now, running track, I'm going to miss her first track meet. I'm going to miss her first track meet. But I'm here to serve the people of Ward 6. They've asked for a change, they've signed the petition, it's their constitutional right, it was done exactly the way the law said. I had nothing to do with that. I signed, got my petition signed, and I am on the ballot.
Thank you. And Mr. Ross, again, there were accusations made, that there was another car dealership who claimed I could never, uh, never, who claimed that you were giving them favorites for the same reasons that you, well, according to the act of abuser, that you have the, uh, the second car dealership closed down. What do you have to say to that?
I actually think the accusation was I took campaign contributions from another car dealer, gave him the same waiver variance. Actually, I gave all of the Centennial Hills auto dealers the same waiver in regards to Town Center standards. It wasn't one, it was all of them. Mr. Schala, who's supporting Mr. Goins in this campaign against me, has also contributed to my campaign. So, it's absolutely wrong, it's a lie, and it's misleading my voters.
You also made a statement, or it's been reported that you made the statement that this was a personal vendetta by a Long Beach as well, Ms. Lisa Mayo Doriso?
Absolutely. The same woman running Mr. Goins' campaign.
I see. That was my next question, what was her?
Absolutely. And you have to understand something, too. These aren't Ward 6 residents. These are people that have a personal vendetta on me because I can't be blocked. My book is not for sale. I represent all of the families and all of the businesses in the northwest.
And can you address the accusations that have been made about your giving zoning breaks to people who contribute to your campaign?
Absolutely false, another misleading lie. I've been very consistent in my office for seven years. When a developer, and I'll use this establishment for example, if they want a special use permit, if they want a waiver, if they want a variance, the first thing they do is go meet with the residents. I'm not making those decisions for the development. The residents are making those decisions based on how, if they want something like that in their neighborhood. That's how I've operated since 2005, that's how I operate today.
And though I'm not actually a resident of Ward, I am a resident of the United States of America, and the economy concerns me greatly. I'd like to know what you have planned, actually, a plan you can put into place to help me in that.
Actually, I'm already doing that. I form the Northwest Business Network, in conjunction with Mayor Pro Tem Stavros Anthony. We meet on a regular basis with all of the businesses in this network, both of Ward 6 who work for. I wanted to call it the Ward 10 Business Council, but Mayor Pro Tem didn't like that name. So, we call it the Northwest Business Network, and it's been a very effective tool to get businesses networking. One thing I've also done, and I've been hitting this drum for many years at City Hall, we've got to make it easier to do business in the city of Las Vegas. I talked about it during the mayor's campaign, I've talked about it in my previous campaign, I'm talking about it today. If we are not making it easy for businesses to start, for businesses to open, we're failing. We're not creating those jobs and that much needed tax revenue. We're doing that today.
And Mr. Goins, do you have any kind of plan in place to help the more or less fortunate people in Ward?
Yes, I do. Yeah, can you define what less fortunate? But my overall plan is to help everybody in Ward. It doesn't matter what your socioeconomic background is, it doesn't matter what your income level is. There are a lot of people right now today that six months ago used to be considered in the middle class. People are losing their jobs, they're losing their income, and that's what communities have to rally together. Doesn't matter where you come from, doesn't matter what color you are, you have to come together. The same thing went into addresses veterans. It doesn't matter what branch of service. I do this every day at Workforce Connections. Let me give you a couple of examples of what we've done with veterans at Workforce Connections. On November 4th, 2011, we worked with small business development, the small business owners, and US military veterans. We worked with them to come up with comprehensive plans to get them back to work, to integrate them into small businesses. We provide small businesses incentives to hire veterans, to put them to work so they can have an immediate impact into the community, and so they can hit the ground running as soon as they come back from their deployment. These gentlemen are coming back, their houses are almost on foreclosure, they have kids that need help, and that's what I do each and every day. On November the 9th, we worked with the Urban League, the Las Vegas Review-Journal, and the United Way of Southern Nevada. We held a workshop at the Pearson Community Center, where we had over 30 vendors there directly reporting to veterans and helping them out with their needs. We took any branch of service, didn't matter whether you were in the Reserve or the National Guard, we put on job readiness programs, we worked with employee training, resume writing, Internet job searching, and many more opportunities. So, my plan is to bring the community together. We have to integrate the business community with the constituency in the neighborhood in order to develop comprehensive plans to get people back to work. You hear a lot of talk about, "We formed a business network so the businesses can come together." Each and every day, I work with youth to connect the business community with the youth community to create careers and job development. If we don't have the input from the residents into these problems, it's not going to fail. Constituents are telling me their voices are not being heard, they want a seat at the table, and that's what my plan is, to bring them to the table. Thank you.
Steve, and in my research, I have found that wasteful spending is one of the biggest contributors to the downfall of the economy. And I'd like to know if either one of you have any kind of a plan in place. Because I think politics is a very difficult field, it's a thankless job. Anybody who's ever been even close and involved understands the stresses and the pressures that are involved to make this person happier. You're never going to make everybody happy. But we're in a crisis now, and we need to get the economy under control, and wasteful spending is way out of control. I'd like to know if either one of you have any kind of a solid plan to stand up to your peers to get the wasteful spending out of government?
Well, this is a, this is a perfect example of wasteful spending, this is a special, August special election. I will say this, my involvement at the city council has been phenomenal in regards to our budget handles and wasteful spending. When I was first elected in 2005, remember, it was good times, it was high times, people were working, there was construction going on, things were happening in the city that were phenomenal. We're not going to see those times for a long time. But we at the city of Las Vegas recognize the fact that those days wouldn't last forever. We are one of the only governments in Southern Nevada that took control of our budget, took a look at the wasteful spending, cut, carved, manipulated departments that were doing, crossed, that were overlapping on work that they were doing in this community. We've done a phenomenal job in the city of Las Vegas. I can't speak to North Las Vegas, or Park County, or Henderson. I understand Henderson's done a phenomenal job as well. And the idea is to keep people employed. Jerry Agaro, a financial analyst in the city of Las Vegas, stood before us as a city council and said, "The last thing you want to do is lay people off." We don't want to do that. We want people working, we want our city employees working. Right now, we're in the phase to actually breed hiring workers and filling much-needed spots in all of our departments in the city of Las Vegas. So, I understand your point, I see that, too. I come from the private sector, I'm not a bureaucrat, so I get that. I don't accept wasteful spending. These are taxpayer money, dollars. This is holy money, this is where I'm concerned, and we have to spend it to the best of our ability for our constituents.
Thank you, Mr. Ross, and everything to the people. So, that's, so that's...
Well, wasteful spending is just like running a household. It takes a good team to monitor the budgets, and you have to look at each and every expenditure, you have to look at each and every line item. And again, my plan to not to have wasteful spending is to bring those options and choices to the community. This is what you want, this is what it's going to cost. The books on Ward 6 will be open so that you can come and see where your taxpayer dollar is going.
And with that, I am through with my questions.
Gentlemen, once again, thank you for showing up this morning and facing our panel here. My name is Jason Brooks, I'm retired from the Marine Corps, Staff Sergeant, and I was actually medically retired in 2005, and I was actually born and raised here in Las Vegas in Nevada, so I've been here almost four years. So, thank you for being here. One of my questions kind of is to spin off on Karen, so we start talking about wasteful spending. In the north west Las Vegas area, or northwest Las Vegas area, how much revenue from your police force actually goes to Metro?
For the cities, we fund 40% of Metro Police Department's budget, the county funds 60% of that budget.
Right. So, you're funding 40% of Metro's budget?
Correct.
From your area?
Well, from my area specifically, Ward 6, no, I don't have those numbers. That's from the city as a whole.
Okay. And along the lines of veterans issues, one of the things that you touched on, Mr. Goins, is about veterans that come back and they have problems with their homes, with their homes being underwater, or their homes being taken from, from them, from the bank. It's actually illegal for them to take a veteran's home, especially a veteran who gets deployed. When a veteran comes back, I mean, there's tons of things in place, the government replaced a long time ago, soldiers, better beat back, and some acts like that. What are you going to do to help the veterans who are losing their homes, that are losing their homes illegally, that the banks shouldn't even stop moving, even approach the veteran about taking their home? And they come back and now their home's gone. What do you intend to do about that?
See, I'm unaware that that's illegal for the banks to take a veteran's home away, especially if they're deployed. I was unaware of that, so thank you for sharing that with me. I will share with you this, and it's not just veterans only. A couple of months ago, I sponsored and passed the foreclosure registry ordinance in the city of Las Vegas, which requires banks to maintain foreclosed properties. It wasn't specifically pointed at veterans, but since you bring this up, I'd like to know more about this to find out what I can do to keep veterans in their homes and not allow the banks to take a veteran's home, especially when they're unemployed. I'm unaware of this, and I would be certainly, certainly interested in making some advances in regards to the city of Las Vegas.
And Mr. Goins?
What I would do is I would, as I've done again with Workforce Connections, through working with youth, I work with a number of bank presidents in town on youth programs and community initiatives. And this to me is nothing more than a community initiative. I would call the bank president, and I would sit down with the bank president, I would sit down with members of the Veterans Administration, I would sit down with citizens like yourself who have probably going through this personally, but I don't want anybody to put air in their personal business. But I would bring that consortium together, and we would figure out a way for these veterans to keep their home. Now, if we find out anything's illegal about it, we will prosecute it to the highest of the highest. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you for coming. My name is Bruno Moya, Sergeant, United States Marine Corps, currently with VIP, there is Politics, Assistant Veterans Coordinator. Currently going to school for psychology. My main concern is veterans, obviously, and the psychological problems that a lot of veterans have coming back from deployments and, you know, it's about getting out of the military environment. The next question that you have to answer is, what are we doing today for the veterans that are going to be here? Since Ward 10, I believe we're getting a lot of awards in the city of Las Vegas, a lot of our veterans are coming home. What are we doing today to, you know, the plans to get people to have a better stable situation, ways? We have the last PTSD accidents that has to have here in Las Vegas. As you know, PTSD, it's documented that over time it develops and it gets greater, it worsens over time. So, what are we doing today to help advance veterans that are coming back from three and four deployments, either in Iraq, Afghanistan, South America, and we need?
Well, as I spoke to you earlier, through my work at Workforce Connections, we work with veterans every day. At Workforce Connections, we're an organization that gets federal funding. Our federal funding is, is spread throughout the community. We believe in people partnerships and possibilities. So, what we do with our funding is we work with organizations in the community, both nonprofit and small businesses. These nonprofits do focus on the exact issues that you're talking about. And I'll give you a good example, one that my opponent just yesterday on a radio show mentioned, that he would not even support a federal investigation into the shooting of this veteran that just got killed just a couple of weeks ago. Because he had some psychological problems, and that's where we, that where the rubber meets the road. We can't attack folks like that. We have to begin to understand what's going on in America. These veterans are in foreign lands protecting our constitutional right, and when they come back from deployment, we should have, meet them similar to we meet the president, or similar to they meet the Queen in England. We should have a welcoming committee up there. We should embrace these people, we should embrace our veterans, we should put every effort that we have as a community forward to take care of them. Now, on Ward 6, what I would do is I would create a veterans committee. I would sit down and bring the veterans of this community together, I would get them very engaged in programs within the community, I would very much put in place an opportunity for them to have a sanctuary where they can come and wind down after deployment from overseas.
To your question, I want to learn the city of Las Vegas doing anything in regards to PTSD. It is turning out to be a very serious issue in this community, so I can say we're not doing enough. I can also say this, that the, my involvement with Veterans in Politics, my involvement with the VFW, the veterans in general, I made a commitment during the mayor's campaign, and I've had this conversation with Mayor Goodman several times, about already forming a veterans council, of all volunteers, to address these issues in the community. These are serious issues that our veterans are dealing with, and I don't think it's going to go away anytime soon. If the VA doesn't do it, somebody's got to step up and do it, whether it's Park County, Social Services, or anybody else. But this is turning out to be one of the hottest topics in any community throughout the country, PTSD issues, men and women are suffering from coming back from deployment. You've got to address it. We're not doing enough now, I'll tell you that right now.
One of the issues with PTSD also is being able to, being unstable at a job, going from job to job, not being able to, wanting to go to a certain job. So, a lot of veterans with PTSD issues that aren't identified to have PTSD, but they have the symptoms, you know, they bounce around from job to job. How, how can you guys identify these issues and help identify veterans? I know you guys want to, you give a lot of jobs, and you guys talk about communities for job development, but how can we identify veterans and helping them out when they're bouncing from job to job?
I think you get it on the head already, because we have to identify them first. And I've never been deployed, but I would have to say this, everyone that's deployed and in any combat situation, whether they're close to the fire or back from the fire, probably comes home with some form of PTSD. My father served in the war, and he wouldn't even talk to me about the war when I was younger, because it bothered him so much. So, I think everybody suffers from that. And I think first, those men and women have to be identified first. Now, there are great state programs, great local programs, veterans, to get them employed, there are incentives to businesses to employ veterans, but it's got to be more than that. And I think, back to the previous question, my answer is identifying those men and women with PTSD... with PTSD, making sure they are getting the help and support that they need, so they're not bouncing from job to job, so they're focused on a career. I've been involved in building trades for 25 years in my career. We have great programs and apprenticeship programs where we actually search out, we've got a great veterans program, Help Us To Hard Hats, that actually, we look for veterans to get into our apprenticeship programs. Some veterans come home at the journeyman level in several trades, and that's significant to remember. And so, my work in regards to the trade organizations that I work in and around and firmly work for today, you've got bold and opportunities for veterans. And the Help Us To Hard Hats program is sponsored by the National Building Trades Council. It's a phenomenal program that I've been very involved with for a long time.
What I would do to specifically answer your question is, you have to understand why are, why are veterans bouncing from job to job? So, to understand where they're going, you have to understand where they come from. So, what I would do first is do some research. We have a great Lou Boe Brain Institute here, some of the brightest minds in medicine that come from the Cleveland Clinic. I would sit down and put that group of doctors, doctors from the Veterans Administration together, and discuss the issue. Then I would look back at trends and patterns. I'd look back at wars like the Vietnam War, to see what happened after veterans came back, to see what types of employment, what type of opportunities there were then. Then I'd take all that information, and I then try to determine what the problem is and tackle it with that. But to understand why they're bouncing from place to place, I think I'd do it through research and bringing some of the brightest minds in medicine together that I could find.
Okay. Real quick, before I ask if we have any other questions from here, we are going to have questions from you and the public. If you want to have a question, think of something. If you've got a question for one of the commissioners, keep them respectful, and I guess I'll be the arbiter of that.
Thank you.
Of whether they are, wish me luck.
You're clack.
So, yes, they're going to find you. Any other questions from the panel?
Yeah, I can't, I can pass. I wanted to come back around.
Okay.
Real quick, Mr. Ross, what do you know about the Beltway deal?
The Beltway deal? You have to allow...
The 215 Beltway deal, where the contract was awarded to the non-lowest bidder, and the lowest bidder was bought off?
That is a Clark County Public Books project, awarded by the Clark County Commission. Very familiar with it, actually. I didn't understand the deal part, but I'm familiar with the Beltway. What I do know of it is that several years ago, the two bidding contractors on the Beltway project, the county commission had awarded the contract to one contractor, actually twice, because it was thrown out in court, and then there was a whole bunch of litigation going on. From my perspective, I was actually very upset with the entire process, because our residents in the northwest have been waiting for that to happen for a long time. And it has, for me, it has to do with jobs and putting people to work. So, I'm a little upset about it, that the county, however they screwed it up or didn't screw it up, I'm not going to certainly comment on that.
Please do.
But it held up, it held up the project for two, two years, when our residents could be out there working. And I'll share this with you. This is, this is just a cycle. I get a lot of complaints about the construction going on from the northwest, and they're good complaints, because once I've had a chance to explain, why did you give US 95? Why did you give the 215 Beltway? The regional flood control drainage projects that they're currently working on. All of these construction projects are jobs. So, I remind people, when you see an orange pill or a backhoe, somebody's got a job. So, I'm a little upset it took so long. I fought real hard at the time with the county commissioner to get that thing on the street. It didn't matter who got the contract, just put people who get the job done.
Thank you. Mr. Goines, what do you know about corruption in Clark County School District with bribery, rampant in contracting and offending the district?
I have no insight into that. I've worked with the school district. As a matter of fact, I'm part of the school district right now through my employer on a graduate advocate initiative program, working to get kids to graduate from high school. I have not, know of any corruption, and I really, frankly, honestly can't speak to that.
If somebody brought you evidence, would you take it to the FBI? Yeah. If somebody brought you evidence of corruption, would you take it to the FBI?
That's a trick question.
I don't think so. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Depends on who it is that brings the evidence.
Fair enough.
If somebody walks in and just gives me evidence...
So, you're going to decide if it's worth reporting?
No. I think if somebody brings me evidence, they should take it to the FBI.
Okay. Mr. Ross, what's the reason for large, larger unincorporated areas in Ward 6?
If you look at a map of Ward 6, you see all these little islands out there. Those are county islands that are in the county's domain, if you will. They're unincorporated because they haven't been annexed into the city of Las Vegas.
Why?
Years and years ago, the county, fearful of the city just annexing at will, created some state laws that doesn't allow the city to just annex at will. If I had the opportunity, I would annex all of the county islands and make the city a real city, not a city with a bunch of holes in it. I've made my points clear to the county commission and a couple of county commissioners who are going to arm wrestle me over that one day. But it's true, you've got a lot of unincorporated areas out there. The tax burden is a little lower than paying actually to the city of Las Vegas program, but not significant enough to not be part of the city. In my discussions with a lot of folks living in rural areas and annexing to the city, they say, I've heard many comments, if we don't mind that, we just keep the rural nature of our neighborhood. This is absolutely what I intend to do. The city, however, these great urban planners want you to have curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and streetlights down every street in the valley. Now, I'm not a big believer in that. My wife and I have lived in a rural area for 10 years and enjoyed the heck out of it. We didn't have curbs, gutters, and sidewalks, and streetlights. And we want to maintain that rural nature in those, in those areas. So, one day, we're going to have a serious conversation between both the city and the county about annexing all of the islands.
Fair enough. Mr. Goines, do you support the merger of North Las Vegas with the city of Las Vegas?
In creating one municipality?
Absorbing North Las Vegas?
No, I don't. I think each and every one of our communities is unique. I think each one of them has their own historic value and they, their own historic designation. I think we should keep them separate. But here's what I think we can do. Some of the services that we utilize could conceivably come together and be joined together. Your business license, for example. There should be a one-stop shop where if you want to get a business license, either in the county, or the city, or North Las Vegas, or Henderson, or both cities, you should be able to come and get that in one place. So, consolidating some services to save some money is a good thing, but you also don't want those folks that are maybe affected by that to lose their jobs. So, you want to make sure that you can allocate them to other, other positions within, within the different government.
Mr. Ross, merger?
You know, I've actually thought about it, but I'm going to side with my opponent on this. I think North Las Vegas has a uniqueness about it. There's a lot of great pride in the city of Las Vegas. Currently, I'm the president of the Battle League of Cities, and I work with all of the cities throughout the state of Nevada, especially North Las Vegas. Ward 6 borders North Las Vegas, so I work very closely with the mayor and the council members in regards to things that are happening there. But like my opponent, we're already doing it. Per a senate bill, passed the legislation last, last session, we are already creating that one-stop shop for business licensing and permits, as a matter of fact. And we are already working with North Las Vegas on many shared services within the city to help North Las Vegas. It benefits no one, that any of the cities in Southern Nevada struggle financially. I take it upon myself, we're very closely with North Las Vegas, to help them move forward, to working in partnership so we can get out of the second half of Thanksgiving.
Just a couple more.
Okay.
How about Paradise? Merger Paradise?
I'm, I'm going to be quite honest with you. I am, I'm an annexing madman. I have no problem annexing all the way down Las Vegas Boulevard. It's going to benefit the taxpayers of the city of Las Vegas.
Same with Winchester?
Same with Winchester. But again, keep in mind, the county many, many years ago, fearful that the city of Las Vegas would do that annexation at will, created laws that don't allow us to do so.
Okay, so, you know Sheriff Gillespie, right?
I do.
And you're aware that Metro has a policy for dealing with mental health citizens, citizens who are suspected of having mental health issues?
I'm aware of that policy.
So, if you became aware of that policy and the fact that Metro violated its left, right, sideways, up and down, would you then support an inquiry into the shooting of that veteran?
Let me clarify what my opponent said also. The question had to do with whether I supported a federal investigation into the Metcalfe Police Department. I think that if there were heinous incidences going on in Metcalfe Police Department, no one would have to ask for an inquiry from the Department of Justice. It would be happening today.
Yep.
Yes.
It would be happening today.
You've ever had a talk with Black and...
Nonetheless, I think...
So, are you going to be our whistleblower?
Are you going to be our whistleblower? Absolutely. In fact, let me back up a couple of questions about someone brings me evidence of corruption. We have a responsibility in this community. When I put my name on the ballot in 2005, I claimed responsibility to represent the people of this city, and I take that very seriously.
So, would you take evidence of corruption in Clark County School District to the FBI?
Absolutely.
Last question. Do you still have the crumpled union card in your wallet?
I certainly do. It's actually laminated.
You have the crumpled union card in your wallet.
You got it, brother. It's laminated now, so it's, it's crumpled. There it is. It was not laminated. Where's my union card?
Thank you.
Any other questions for the panel? Oh, we do, okay.
Well, actually, real quick, in ties to that union card right there, Mr. Ross, do you have any, because you're unionized, are there any conflicts with your assemblyman duties? Because you're responsible to unions?
I'm a city councilman, not an assemblyman.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I understood the question. There have been, there have been times when my union, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, has had items before the city council. I'll give you an example. One year, they wanted to install a wind generator at their training center for training purposes at the apprenticeship pool. Those type of items I have to abstain, disclose and abstain from. If they directly affect the membership of the union that I participate in, I disclose and abstain every time that's required.
I'd actually like to add to that, if I might.
Sure.
In serving in the best interest of the constituents, don't you think that it would be in their best interest if you stepped down, or at least, at the very least, refrained from being involved in activities that might be construed as having conflict with them?
I absolutely have. And I made that very clear in all full meetings. I currently do not represent the Building Trades Council anymore, have not done that for three years. So, that's, that's water, river, and bridge, and gone, no way back. But it's still the same. If they directly affect the union that I belong to, would always disclose and abstain. I'm a man of my word and will stand behind the purpose.
Kind of going back to the constitution of the state of Nevada, can you kind of explain to everybody here who might not understand how this recall election works, how it's spelled out in the constitution? What are the grounds for the recall?
Well, it isn't...
Do you have to actually be found guilty at some time?
You actually don't. And I'll be the first one to say this. I'm a big enough man, have broad enough shoulders to say to my constituents, if my constituents aren't happy with the work that I'm doing, and I wasn't representing the people like I told them I would, and kept my campaign promises, I wouldn't be here today enjoying this wonderful interview from the veterans of politics. The way a recall election works is everyone has the constitutional right to recall any, any candidate at any office. They have to garner 25% of the votes for the last general election that the candidate was in. In this instance, it was 1,084 votes that they had to get, that people that actually voted in the last general election. In regards to get a petition circulated to get on a ballot, it's not the same. You just need to get registered voters to sign that petition.
And that leads me to the question for you, Mr. Goines. I understand that you submitted your petition for position to run for the seat 20 minutes before the deadline. Was there a reason for that?
We had to submit it before 5:00. I work 8 to 5. I actually had to take, take vacation time to run down and take them down there. So, I mean, we followed, we followed with, with the guidelines.
Absolutely.
8 to 5. Now, I will say that throughout that process, and what had happened is the Larry Lomax of the Registars Department did a random sample of about 500, about 500 signatures. And of that, he found, because what he didn't want to do was to have to count all 1,700, which takes manpower, time. So, he wanted to verify this through the sampling process. And there were a couple of residents who live in Ward 6, registered in Ward 6, had moved but hadn't updated their address. And so, he reached out to those folks and told them to come in and verify his address. And that's what was holding up. He said, if you had six of those that come in before 5:00, all of your signatures are valid. So, that went out through the news media, from what I understand. I was at work, but people were telling me they heard something on the news, and within an hour, within an hour, three people heard it on the news, looked on the website, and they called the Registars officer, went down there, and they updated their voter information.
And at what point in this whole process of the recall, did you decide that you qualified to run for the seat and to the fat run?
Well, I, for six months, I was watching the process. I saw the first round of signatures that went out. I saw that they didn't make the cut. I just sat back and watched. I had no interest in it, in running. But what was key is after the group said they were going back, I believe it was 90 days after the first time, my phone started ringing. I started getting calls from homeowners associations, I started getting calls from residents, asking me would I be interested in running. At that point, it just piqued some interest. But then, when the second set of signatures came in and they were validated, I even got more calls. And at that time, I spoke with my family, I spoke with my wife, who's sitting in the back, my nine-year-old son, Josh, did we win today?
I love you.
Did we win today? Oh, we didn't get it today.
I'm glad to hear they're keeping score at kids' basketball.
Yeah, they are.
Okay.
But I talked with my, my, my parents as well, my dad, long-serving city councilman in North Las Vegas, my sister, who is currently the vice mayor in North Las Vegas. So, we talked about, again, our commitment to this community. I come from a family of educators. My parents have an elementary school named after. My sister is assistant principal. My sister is a counselor, and I'm a licensed educator as well. So, when those discussions happened, I knew it was my time. I've served 18 years as an appointed official. In those 18 years, I have represented every ward within the city of Las Vegas. As a matter of fact, in 1992, on the Board of Zoning Adjustment, I was responsible for a lot of the zoning out here before anything in Ward 6 was built. And so, that's what I felt established my qualification. Now, you want somebody that's transparent and is clear about what's going on. You just heard my opponent talk about his union card and abstaining. But he didn't say he has three ethics violations, because he didn't abstain on some items that came before him. That's part of the problem.
Agreed.
Captain Ross, if you want to respond to that?
Well, certainly. I will never, never backtrack on vote for City Hall. And that's what my opponents specifically speak to me. My role as the secretary treasurer of the Building Trades Council at the time we were voting on the City Hall project was significant. I support the votes, I'd do it again if I was asked to do it again. Now, here's something that people don't understand, is I did exactly what the city attorney told me to do. He knew my role as the secretary treasurer of the Building Trades Council. He knew my involvement in the construction industry. I did everything I was told to do by the city attorney. I looked at the city attorney who sat next to me at the time and said, please counsel me on what I need to do here. That's exactly what I did, and that's exactly what he told the Ethics Commission. These were three non-willful violations, which I haven't been able to fight in court yet, because the Ethics Commission hasn't even read the opinion.
Well, I don't have any more questions, gentlemen, but I would like to suggest that if both of you refer to each other as opponents, but I would like to suggest that you think of each other as partners. Is one of you more convinced of the seat than the other? We're all going to have to work together for the better of the citizens of South Vegas.
Okay. Any thoughts from, anybody have any questions they want to? Just go ahead and raise your hand and ask a question if you've got anything you want to ask. Yes?
I don't have a strategy to ask.
Okay. Can you speak up a little bit, please, so we can all hear it? You might have to go there.
I think the recall is ridiculous. We have no one. If we don't vote him, he's coming up for an election again. Boogie Man.
Okay, there you go. Okay, there you go, she just said, she told the recall from a financial point of view was foolish. This seat comes up 2013, is that correct?
That's correct.
So that would be what part of 2013, the summer, or the...
The spring.
The spring of 2013, so it's a year away. So either way, there's going to be another election in 2013. Whoever wins this seat will hold it forth the rest of the year, possibly a year, a little more than that. So I've got a question for both of you, and I'll ask Mr. Goines first. What have you enjoyed about, you've served, both of you have served the city for many years. What have you enjoyed most about serving the city? What are some of the pleasurable things, moments that you've had, things that you reflect on and consider? This is fun. Now, politics is a thankless job, but there had to have been some fun moments in what you've done.
My fun moments are, my fun moments are the neighborhood meetings. To be able to get into the community, to be able to shake hands, to be able to look folks in the eyes and address their concerns. I'm a lover of people. All my life, I've been in the customer service industry, I've been serving people, been a public servant for a little over, for a long time, over 18 years. But I enjoy the people, I enjoy engaging in the community, and I love to see the fruits of the labor, especially when we zone and plan parks, we plan schools, churches. I love to come back and see the people and ride through those communities and just reflect back. And that's what the advantage of having to be able to stay on a commission for over 18 years. Now, to stay on that commission for 18 years, you have to be a person that is a consensus builder, you have to have been a person that previous administrations respect. So I contribute that for being stable, for being engaged, and for always respecting people and their wishes. And you know what? Listening to what you have to say.
Mr. Ross?
There are so many things I like about my job. Since I was elected in 2005, I have been consistent at going to two or three homework associations along the way. That's where the rubber meets the rubber. Been asked to run for higher offices and other positions, and I never had the desire to do that, because this is where the real work gets done. It gets done in settings like this one, meeting my constituents face-to-face on a regular basis, and sometimes it's four or five times a month, depending on how my office sets up those meetings. But my most favorite part is this, when a 10-year-old little girl calls my office and says, "Councilman, you don't remember me, but I want to help you with this campaign. I've seen you at Girl Scouts, I've seen you come to my elementary school, I saw you dye your hair pink for the benefit of our kids at my school, I saw you ride a donkey backwards against my principal." Those are the most favorite. And I have an opportunity, my wife and my staff agree, every now and then every week, I go to two or three elementary schools, and my wife makes me dress up, everything happens to be, and I get to go meet with those students. That problem is the most, most, funnest part of my job and most rewarding. It's been so rewarding, Ron, that I am just in the process of having my first Northwest Youth Council meeting next week. I have worked with all five high schools in Ward 6 and their principals to engage our students at every grade level to participate in Northwest Youth Council. I've acted on the School Safety Action Committee, have been for several years, as my assistant, Michelle, has been. I work very closely with Metro and the school police and many administrators in the high schools to discuss and address high school issues and what's happening with our kids. One element was missing, and that was the students themselves. So I'm really excited about the formation of the Northwest Youth Council, it's going to be a big deal. And what's more important is moms and dads are excited about it too, because these aren't the 4.0 students, these aren't the student council presidents, the student body people, these are the 2.0 and less GPA students who are on the edge. Am I going to finish high school? Am I going to go on to college? Those are the kids I'm going to get actively engaged in the civic process, so I'm really looking forward to that fun part of my job.
All right, thank you, let's have a big hand for these two people. Put their arm in the wood chipper, as the governor describes, running for this office. And for veterans in politics, certainly, for what you've done. Putting this together and making this happen, you guys have tough, difficult choices certainly to make on endorsing candidates, you do that, you do it very effectively, and I think the community listens, certainly, to your voice, so you take that very seriously, and that's good. So to Mr. Goines, Councilman Ross, thank you very much. We'll leave on a positive note with those last comments, I did enjoy those. And thank you very much, Steve Sanson, is there anything else that you could be ready, I think we finished under our time limit, we're close, we're about there.
About to run.
Oh. Mr. Ross, glad you're having fun, and I've got a grandkids basketball game, and I've got to go right after this.
Ron, you got the bag on the end of the chute of the wood chipper.
Yes, I did, yes.
I want to know, I want to know if the candidates have any questions they want to ask each other.
Any questions for each other?
Nope.
I'm thinking, good to go? Okay. Well, thank you very much for hanging out here in Ward 6, again, voting, early voting is the 26th and 27th, Election Day, the 31st of this month. Thank you very much for your attendance, everybody.